Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Thursday, August 1st, 2013. The agenda for this evening is approval of minutes. We have a vote to take on Bertucci's Restaurant, who is changing their director. We're going to go through as a review some board procedures. But the most important event for this evening is the assembly down in our lobby for the Prisoner of War Missing in Action Chair Dedication Ceremony, which should be at around 7:30, although, as I just came in here, we were advised it may be a few minutes later than that as warning. And I want to tell our cameraman that he's been superseded by the three television networks that are downstairs as well. So, we're then going to have a discussion on a new arrangement with the Cable Educational and the HCAM organization. I've asked the town administrator to give us an update on the pedestrian bridge issue at Whitney Wharf, which you will recall we discussed at town meeting. And then we'll have selectman administrative reports and then adjourn to an executive session to discuss labor negotiations. Before I begin the minutes, I just, there was two issues I wanted to bring to the board's and my colleagues' attention. One was a status, as I promised in a couple of meetings ago, about the water company. I should inform the public that, as you recall, we said there were two options on the table: negotiation and perhaps acquisition, if the town meeting in both cases agreed to that. In order to have a negotiation, you have to be talking. And a phone call was promised to me on June 28th, which I have not yet received from the president of Aquarian. So I am assuming that they are not wanting to talk. So I am not optimistic at this juncture of a negotiation, although I remain hopeful. As you know, on July 3rd, the town filed and asked the Supreme Judicial Court to do two things: one, to take it under their purview to review the 1879 statute; and, secondly, to determine the price, and so that the price that the town may pay if it decided to buy it for the water company. In our filing, we put forth a number of $59.4 million. I would remind you, in July of 2012, the water company said they were for sale for $185 million. I think somebody, and I'm not a lawyer, Paul, or Irma, I don't know what the definition of irreconcilable is, but that gets pretty close. And that's the reason we went to court. So, they have asked, we filed on July 3rd, they have petitioned the clerk of the court to have their ability to respond to our filing on August 19th. So, that appears to be the best way for this proceeding to get resolved in the courts and let them decide it, but we'll hear more sometime within the next few weeks. And then, lastly, I thought the public would be interested, the Harvard Current, a week or so ago, ran an article with State Attorney General for Connecticut Jepson's comments concerning an Aquarian water rate increase of 23% being requested within Connecticut. In addition, needless to say, the attorney general's comments were somewhat succinct and to the point. He didn't like it. In addition, Aquarian, for the information of the public, has made a purchase bid to buy a water company that is now owned by the town of Bethel, Connecticut. And they offered to pay book value, which, by the way, to connect the dots, is the amount of money that we're offering in the $59.4 million number that we derived. The town of Bethel, Connecticut, took the meeting to vote, and the town rejected the offer of Aquarian to buy them by a three-to-one margin. So it's interesting that the behavior of Aquarian is somewhat consistent in terms of their desire for future rate increases, but it's upsetting to the fact that we're still not talking, but I am always hopeful that we, at some point, might. Mr. Alexiades, was there anything I forgot?
No.
Okay. And then, one last item before I turn it over. Monday, Monday, is Monday, Tuesday? No, it was Monday, Monday. I had the pleasure, once again, of attending an event down at Almanove. And the event was, I think, the third or fourth time we've been there for the Mark Wahlberg Youth Foundation. That was Tuesday, I'm correct. It was Tuesday evening. And that's a fundraiser to which I very happily contributed, as I have to all of those events. But it's a demonstration of the commitment that that restaurant and a number of people who were there from the town have made to promote youth development and support. The exciting part of the evening, aside from a good movie, which Mark obviously starred in, was Mark Wahlberg received his GED degree, which, he's in his 40s, I think, I'm not exactly sure. But he received his GED degree, which his mother, by the way, had received at age 60. So, a good role model and a man who practices what he preaches, but certainly a good event. So, with that windbag approach to the opening of the meeting, let me introduce the gentleman from Bertucci's. Could you come up and tell us who you are and say the magic words, if you would? Thank you.
My name's Keith Roche. I've been with Bertucci's since '97. I've been the general manager over here in Hingham for the last two and a half years. And I've been brought here today, from what I understand, just some questions about the company being bought, or, you know, majority stockholders decided to buy out more of the stock. So, I don't know too much about it. It hasn't affected us on our level at the restaurant, but I'm here to represent us and answer whatever questions I possibly can, if you have them.
Okay. Irma?
Why are they doing this? Do you know?
I...
Do they consider it more valuable and they're trying to buy it back?
I'm not sure. I know that Bertucci's had them as part of our team. They were the, they owned about 49% of the shares, I believe, and they just decided to be a majority shareholder. So they came onboard more. I guess we're a successful company, they feel. I'm not sure.
Okay.
But that's really high up in the infrastructure. We're not really affected at all. No change in our command or leadership at all.
Mr. Hingham?
Will there be any change in the South Hingham store with respect to its operations?
No, not a thing.
And the commitment remains for all A, B, C requirements?
Yes, sir.
Tips, training, and all that?
Tips, training.
Yeah, they've already began to communicate with the A, B, C. They allowed them to file with them first, according to the notes I have here.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Okay. Irma?
I move to approve the new officer/director and stock transfer and issuance of stock for Bertucci's Restaurant Corporation, doing business as Bertucci's Brick Oven Restaurante.
I have a second? Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You're done.
Thank you.
Good. Congratulations.
Y'all have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I did, we have minutes to approve for June 27th and July 15th.
So moved.
The only thing I would ask, because I didn't see it on the copy, I had asked that copies of Bruce, the statement that you read, be attached, because it's much easier to read it rather than to watch the replay. And also, the one that John Asher read, that they be attached to the minutes, so that we could actually read them.
Did council call you?
I have not.
Okay. I will delay the vote until you talk to council. On the advice of council, I'm advised not to do that.
Okay. I would like to talk to council.
So I think...
Because it's been read into the record.
That's okay.
Okay.
But they are private notes in his interpretation, and, you know, I'll let him explain it.
Okay.
So, was that the 15th?
Yeah. No, the 27th. Yes.
Okay, so...
I withdraw my motion.
All right. How about the 15th?
So moved.
Okay.
Yep, I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So Betty, you put it on for next week?
Yes, I will.
For the 27th? Okay. The next item is, I want to just review some board procedures, and we do this periodically, not because there's anything awry, but just to make sure we're following our own rules and the respective rules that have been established, not only by our practice, but also in the course of other people who deal with how meetings should be run. And I thought, there are three areas that are worthy of review. One is, the governing document that the town has adopted has been Robert's Rules of Order. And the second issue is to talk about the role of liaisons, to be sure we're all clear on who does what in that regard. And then, the third is to talk about executive sessions. As you all know, the state, two and a half years ago, changed the rule for open meeting regulation, and it's good that we stay current on that and remind ourselves of the issue. And one of the, so, if you would, let me just start with Robert Rules of Order. It's simple. I promised not to go through the 183 pages that are in here, but I did want to just talk about a couple of things, because it makes for easier meeting and better control. As you know, at the beginning of every year, every, right after elections, we elect a chairman. And in Chapter 2 of Robert Rules of Order, it says, "The chairman is the presiding officer at the meeting, and therefore sets the agenda and governs the procedure," designating the next speaker and recognizing people who want to speak. But the concern is that we want to be sure that each of us up here has the right to speak. And I want to be sure, as the rules guide in in Chapter 3, that we have an understanding that, in order to speak, you have to be recognized by the chair. And I want to make sure that my colleagues get to me to make sure that I recognize them when they need to speak, but that we do it in a formal way, so that we can maintain the semblance of the meeting and keep it moving forward. We could go through this book if you'd like, but I don't intend to do that. But I think those are things, and the other rules that we follow are important. But I'm concerned, I want to make sure my colleagues feel comfortable, so that I make sure I do my job, and I want to make sure they get the right to speak. So that's my purpose in raising that. The next issue has to do, if there's any questions? The next issue has to do with the role of liaisons, and I think in your folder, you will find a document that talks about the roles of liaison. And the reason for clarifying that is, and we'll talk about liaisons in a minute, the reason for clarifying liaison is, we're a unique town, in the sense that there's a three-member board, and it requires the vote of two-thirds of the board to enact any action. And it's important that when we, that when the liaison serve in this rather awkward position, which is, they represent the committee to the town and the town government in the form of the selectman. And the selectman, in turn, represent the board to the committee, board, or other town agency that governs the particular issue. So in your, I put forward kind of a statement that Ted and I searched through the Internet to see what other towns do. In some towns, it's a little more involved in terms of who they allow to speak, and how they vote, and what the liaison can do and not do. But the definition that's in front of you is one that I thought best crafted what we think the role should be, and it understands what the role of the selectman would play as a liaison. So I put it there. I hopefully had a chance to look at it today, and I'll open it up for any comments or questions that you may have about it.
Can you say what it says?
Sure. Let me just borrow Paul's. Yeah, let me read it to you. We'll have it available. Sure. It says, "The Board of a Selectmen assigns one member of the Board of each department to each department, Board and Committee. Liaisons are expected to be a resource for departments, boards, or committees, as they conduct their work and to enhance communication between the Board of Selectmen and the departments, boards, or committees. Care should be taken not to direct the work of departments, boards, or committees without the approval of the Board of Selectmen. And the attention should be given to limiting presence so as to not overly influence the work of the departments, boards, or committees." The problem is, for any of us, and we've all been executives in some form or fashion, is there's an instant tendency to want to help, guide, or direct. But the important thing to remember is, when we speak, we speak as individuals, and that nothing can occur except as a member of the Board. And this was particularly brought home to me in the water study committee, which I just talked about a little bit, is that while that committee can work, I don't vote at those meetings, but I try to convey back at those meetings what's going on. And when it becomes appropriate for the decision of this Board to accept or reject, that's my role, to bring back that issue. I think what we saw a few weeks ago, with all the good work that's been done on the waterfront, that Irma has liaised with that issue, that they've, they brought that back to us, for us to accept or reject and discuss, which we are continuing to do and will do. And it's a good presence that's engendered some conversation. Paul is new to the department, but this relationship, new to this position, is something that, as we all start out, it's good to just refresh our memory as to how this should work. So that's the intent here. So I think this captures it, but I'm open to suggestions. Okay? Irma?
That's understanding of what we have to do.
Okay. Okay. So we'll enter this into the minutes. Betty, if you would. Now, the executive session. I think this is the area that has caused a lot of confusion, particularly because the rules have changed. And there is a concern, I think, as I've talked to legal folks around the Commonwealth and state legislatures, the intent is to keep transparency front and foremost, and to make sure that when we do those, that when we vote to go into those sessions, the session implies that we will go into it in order to avoid a public discussion of it, because such discussions might jeopardize the nature of the town. I think what we've tried to do is be very careful when we do that, and I know that some people have been concerned about the number of executive sessions we have. Later this evening, we're going to have a discussion in selectmen's reports because of questions that some of my colleagues have raised concerning legal fees, and want to talk about that. But that's the, some, in some cases, that's the guidance we get. And again, the guiding principle is that public discussion or disclosure of those deliberations would be harmful to the town until such time as the issue is resolved. So there are a number of events that have happened recently where we've resolved the issue, and the executive minutes are ready for public review. So, the town administrators reminded me of this, so next week, we're going to issue some of those executive session minutes, to make sure that they are current. It's an interesting, there's an award we get, I understand, from, I forget the organization, that if we comply with doing minutes within a timely fashion, we get recognition for that, to make sure we're doing what the law intends.
The award is from common cause, and it's by publishing our web, using our website to publish our minutes.
Yeah.
And the IT department's been successful in garnering that award and cajoling departments and boards, this included, to get their minutes and get them up on the webpage. And, you know, I think, by and large, the town and departments comply. It's certainly not an intent, from my perspective, not to, but other work gets in the way, and sometimes it's hard to remember that we got to go back, because that's the record that the public wants to look at. That's the record of what happened at the meeting.
Can you clarify, Ted, perhaps, on executive session? There are some minutes that don't ever...
Correct.
... published. I think that's important for the public to know.
If the matter with which, the purpose for going into executive session has been concluded, it can be, those sessions can be released. However, there are some, and those relate to personnel matters, can never be released. If we're talking about conduct of employees, those stay within their personnel files and not subject to public disclosure.
Okay. Paul? Any questions?
When I sat on the planning board, we would go into executive session rarely, and it was usually in the context of being sued and figuring out what to do. This is a bit of an adjustment for me, I have to say, and I'm happy that you've brought that forward, just so that the public doesn't perceive this to be some kind of secretive process that is calculated to withhold information. I think what I'm taking away here is that most, with the exception of the personnel issue that you've just spoken to, Ted, will be disclosed, but at a time when it's appropriate to do so. And that we need that confidentiality, if you will, to achieve a purpose that's in the best interest of the town.
Good point. All right. Any questions from the public? Mr. Keys, come up top, please.
Well, Keys, just beginning posting of executive board meetings. They're rather vague. As a good example is tonight, you have a labor negotiations. Let's say you're discussing the DPW, just an example, all right? And individuals at the DPW might be interested in what you're discussing tonight. It wouldn't be available when you release the minutes, but they wouldn't know you're discussing it tonight, and they couldn't ask for those minutes, couldn't they? Same thing when you're dealing with real estate. We're discussing a real estate transaction. Well, there might be people interested in that transaction, and they wouldn't know to ask for the minutes when they were released if they didn't know the discussion took place tonight.
No, good point. No, that's a good point.
It has to be much more broad, distilled, reasoned transparency, so that everybody would know what you're discussing.
But the issue is, if you're engaged in a real estate transaction, that generally implies that you're negotiating a price. That's usually the issue. Or the contents in the contract that require discussion for the board members and questions for their clarification.
And that wouldn't come out until you released the minutes.
That's correct.
But somebody that was interested in that wouldn't be able to ask for those minutes if they didn't know you were discussing it that night.
Yeah, Ted, the, I think, when you talk about something like tonight, so let's take tonight, tonight is a labor negotiation. Has to do with an individual person.
Well, that could be personnel, no. Okay. I understand that.
That's what it's about. Now, we don't put on that. But the other issues that we have, for example, on the real estate, and we have a number of those, some of those have to be done in private, for the protection of the person on the other end, and for ourselves.
And they aren't done in private.
That's correct.
But including, sometimes, in terms of real estate, sometimes the release of the property can jeopardize your position. And that's why the law doesn't require us to put it on there, although we have, in certain cases, and we don't feel that is the case. But there are certain situations where, if we're looking to acquire a piece of property, and other people might be looking to acquire a piece of property, and maybe if they know the government is looking to acquire it, they might move quicker. So sometimes, releasing the name, and that's why you're entitled, in certain cases, not to release those. So I think the Board does try to be as transparent as possible. There are certain situations where those protections extend into that agenda.
Well, then, tonight should be a personnel issue, not a labor negotiation, if you're dealing with an individual.
Well, we refer to it as a labor negotiation, because we are negotiating a labor...
That's what the law says, you know, so we...
Well, personnel issue. You wouldn't have to...
A personnel issue would be referred to, generally, we use that when we refer to a disciplinary issue.
Yeah, all right.
It's not a disciplinary issue.
Okay. And the other, and I think, Bob, to the other issue that you raised, which is a good one, we want to be sure that the town's negotiating position is protected. And there are a number of instances, we have a couple of occasions where I've said, "Okay, it's done." And before we do it, we check with council to make sure it's legitimate, because if we're not, then we can't hold the session.
Yeah. Yeah. I just say, you know...
A good point, though.
Just more transparency, and people don't have a right to say, "Hey, there's something going on." If you're transparent about it, they're not going to ask questions.
That's right. Yeah. I heard motorcycles.
We got to get downstairs.
We got to get downstairs. Okay, we'll be back. I think it's going to stay live, am I right, Bob?
Well, it'll stay live. This part of it, going downstairs, will be on video.
Be on video?
Yes.
But you're going to return to live session at the conclusion?
At the conclusion. We're told it'll be about a half an hour?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Okay, we'll see you in a half, we'll adjourn and be back in half an hour.
Ladies and gentlemen, like I said, my name is Chief Deputy Officer Keith German. I'll be the moderator for today's ceremony. I'm also the town of Hingham's veteran service officer. At this time, I would ask everyone who can to please rise, face the flag of our nation, and join me in the pledge allegiance to the United States. I, with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice, for all. Thank you. Please take these seats if you have them. They are very limited. At this time, we'll now have our chaplain of the Hingham Veterans Council, Reverend Deacon John McHugh.
Dear Lord, we pray that you be with us this evening, as we come together to memorialize those who served their country but never returned. These men and women who were taken prisoner or are missing in action, we pray for them and their families, who have waited in hope but still agonize in their unending expectancy. Oh, Lord, please comfort these families and give heart to their comrades. We ask this through your mercy and love, dear Lord. Amen.
At this time, I would like to welcome some honored guests that we have here this evening. First and foremost, the Secretary of Veterans Affairs for our Commonwealth, Mr. Coleman Deputy Secretary of Veterans Affairs, Cheryl Poppy. Our state senator, Robert Hedlund. From State Representative Garrett Bradley's office, Gigi Mariachi, who could not be From State Representative Murphy's office, Adam Morgan. The Board of Selectmen behind me, Chair Bruce R. Buffo. Irma Water. Paul Healy. Our town administrator, Ted Alexiades. Assistant Town Administrator, Betty Foley. Our town clerk, Eileen McCracken. Our partner, VSO Town Cohasset, Vinnie Fontaine. And tonight, why we are all here, we also have the Rolling Thunder, Chapter 1, and their organization, and President Joe Determar. It is my honor to introduce the following people. Mr. and Mrs. Sidney Rosenberg. Sidney is a Hingham prisoner of war from Germany, World War II. The family of one of Hingham's highest-ranking military members, Brigadier General John Family of the missing in action, the Dunn family. The Kelly family. Joe Kelly is a Gold Star father, whose son was lost in the war in Afghanistan. And of course, the Hingham Veterans Council, to whom we owe this great honor tonight. Now that I've welcomed everybody and all of you, I thank you for coming out tonight. It was beautiful out. We had a little rain, but we're not going to let that dampen our spirits. In the military, we have a, in the Seabees especially, which I'm in the branch of, our motto is "Can Do." And the unwritten motto for the troops is "Semper Gumby." And what that means is, you folks always... And what that means is, you folks, always flexible. So we're going to go a little bit out of our program here. Our state senator has another engagement, and I would like to get him up there, because I feel his words are very important and prominent for all of us to hear. So with that, Senator Robert Hedlund.
Thank you, Chief Petty Officer, uh, German, that he did not, was not made aware of what my remarks were, but I'm glad he feels they're appropriate. But I wanted to be here, really to pay tribute, not only to everybody that made today possible, but to pay tribute to the 92,000, not only POW, MIA folks, but their families who are still with us. And it's a beautiful location, in this beautiful building, a place where I attended junior high school. I walked in the door, and Keith was with me when we walked in, and it really stands out and serves, serves its purpose, which is to serve as a reminder. Not as necessarily a tribute or memorial, but a reminder for what families of those who have been unaccounted for had to endure. I can just single out a few folks that are here today. I know you referenced the Kellys from my district, who are still families that are here, some great folks. But good to see Mr. Rosenberg, who represents, is the symbol today for all of the prisoners of war and the families of those who are missing in action. And I know you noted the Dunn family that was here. We all know that the person who really spearheaded recognition for families of those missing in action during the, after the, during and after the Vietnam War was Maureen Dunn of Randolph. And Joan Dunn that is here, Hingham resident, is her sister-in-law. And it's, and I don't mean to inject too much levity into this solemn occasion, but I grew up on Foley Beach Road here in Hingham, and the Duns were on Kimmel Beach, and we had some raging wars of our own, crabapple fights. Her sons Jimmy and Johnny are here, who I think, I connected a few shots, you crabapples back in the day. We are unified and here in peace, in honor of the POW, MIA families. And I want to thank Rolling Thunder Chapter One, it's the Determar, and everybody in the chapter field. I also ride. It's funny, I have a stock exhaust system. Someone commented that I was rolling sewing machines. But I appreciate you being here. And Keith is doing a great job as, as the veterans' agents here in Hingham. And the veterans committee that supports him has done a great job. I'll single out just one member who just recovered from some serious surgery, Jim Claypool is here. And he was one of the guys who spearheaded that beautiful memorial that you see out in front for those of you that have not been here before. So thank you for letting me be a part of this tribute and this important reminder that everybody who visits Town Hall here will see in the future and understand the purpose and meaning behind that reminder.
Before we, we have a few more speakers, I'm going to make some brief comments about today and about what the town of Hingham will pay tribute to, and that's our POW, MIA community. Especially recognizing all the current former prisoners of wars and their families, as was pointed out by the senator, like the Rosenbergs. We also honor those who have gone missing while defending this nation and their family members, like the Ritters, whose picture is right behind Joe there. They could not be here tonight, but they saw fit to send that along. And also the Duns that was mentioned. These people have kept the memories of their loved ones burning bright. They have never stopped pushing this nation and its leaders for closure, the closure that they deserve. Forty years ago during the Vietnam War, it was the wife of a missing servicemember, a young woman named Mary Hoff, who realized that a symbol was needed to remind us of this plight. To remind us all of our servicemembers who are missing or suffering at the hands of former captains. She developed the idea of a flag with that haunting image. The design was made by a World War II pilot. That emblem would eventually become a national symbol. It's the only flag, aside from O'Glory, that has ever flown above the White House. In 1989, it was installed in the Capitol Rotunda as a symbol of this nation's commitment to fully accountable for those that are still missing. Today, we reaffirm that sacred pledge. You are not forgotten. We voice an entire nation's unsending support and our undying promise that no matter how long it takes, no matter what it takes, we will not stop until we have brought every American home. No other country on the face of the earth has devoted so much energy and so many resources to account for our nation's fallen. We do this because we believe that every life is precious, and because those who put their lives on the line for this country need to know that we will spare no effort to bring them home. For it should not just be a few among us that help these families carry the torch, year after year, decade after decade. To those that are still missing, it needs to be all of us. It should be all of us who are one family and one nation under God. Pledge that on this day and every day, that for as long as it takes to bring every American home, we will never stop working, we will never stop searching, and we will never stop remembering those lost warriors. We will never forget those who have sacrificed for our freedom and our values. That is why this country is the greatest country on earth. In the wars of this century, we are blessed by the fact that fewer Americans have gone missing. Fewer have been taken prisoner, and fewer families have had to wait for that long, long return. Still, we gather here today lest we forget. With that said, I'd like to bring forward the Secretary of Veterans Affairs for the Commonwealth, Mr. Coleman Neay.
Thank you so much, Keith, and you and Vinnie. People should recognize that in Massachusetts, we're unique in the nation. One of the reasons we can claim to lead the nation in providing services and benefits to veterans is that we're the only state in the nation that requires that every city or town maintain a veteran service officer to provide benefits and services. And Keith, and Vinnie, that is incredibly difficult and trying and very rewarding job. And Hingham and Cohasset certainly are blessed, got two of the best veteran service officers in the state. So thank you very much, Keith, for going to do the work. So, Rosenberg, thank you very much, you servicer. And the family of Maureen. Maureen was, was a good friend, someone that would call me on a weekly basis. Sometimes those calls were very pleasant and sweet, sometimes not so much. But Maureen certainly is the reason today why POWs and MIA's are recognized, not just in Massachusetts, but throughout the country. And I'm very saddened that Lucy was here. She was fortunate enough to attend both their commemoration ceremonies, as well as her funeral. And I just thought, incredibly beautiful, a humble speech about being reunited with her husband, Joe, was certainly something I wanted to get. So thank you to you and to Maureen for our advocacy. And I just, again, to Rolling Thunder, you know, these guys have been carrying the torch, really setting this up. But this is not all they do. They do so much more to help our veterans all across, all across this country. And again, Joe, to you and to all the chapters, to all of you, thank you so much for your advocacy. And I'll leave you on this. What we do here today is to honor and remember, but most importantly, the way in which we honor those that have given the ultimate sacrifice and that have never returned, is to make sure that we care for their brothers and sisters in arms who did return, and ensure that they get the added benefits and services and resources and gratitude that they've earned and that they deserve. And we carry that forward every day, and certainly events like this and symbols like this will strive us even greater to make sure that we're successful in that mission and, again, as a testament to folks like Cheryl from my department, and Keith, and Vinnie, and to Rolling Thunder, and to all of you. So I appreciate you letting me stay here, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Chairman of our Board of Selectmen from the town of Hingham.
Thank you, Keith. You know, what many people, as Coleman just mentioned, many people don't know about Keith German, is that he has done yeoman's work, literally, to help other towns take and share the experience we in Hingham have had the pleasure of getting. And you share with him that experience so that they too can embark on this very worthwhile, and more importantly, commemorative effort to recognize so many of those who have gone before us in service. When we were coming down here, as I speak tonight to the entire board, Irma Lott shared with me her experiences with people that she recalls losing, and people that are missing. I had a similar experience at Georgetown, where five of my classmates did not return in the Vietnam War. And Selectman Healy shared with me the issue of Operation Glory, the effort to repatriate as many of our lost veterans as we can. This symbolism and this effort of this evening is to put forward for all of us something that we should never forget, because if you ever served overseas, as I have, the greatest tribute we ever get is the fact that people want to be like us. I used to kid with my mother when she came to visit, Mom, come over, but bring Levi jeans. And that was a symbolic gesture, I think, of what they look to us for. And it's because of the service of those who have been before us and who have done this tonight to make this such a worthwhile endeavor. I would be remiss in one final thing. I want to contribute to a couple of people. Eileen McCracken, the town clerk, and John Asher, who was a member of the Veteran Council, and he was running the Veteran Council by, as you heard, Jim Claypool was there, but together they are a cohesive group. They were looking at a commemorative effort, and this chair that you see behind us, I can assure you, did not look like that a few weeks ago. And there's a woman in the back who is really the worker behind Keith. He gets the credit, she just doesn't work. That's a handmade chair, but this whole leather is handmade. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is now my great pleasure and honor to introduce my comrade and our Chair of the Hingham Veterans Council, Captain Jim Claypool.
I simply want to thank very profoundly and from the bottom of all of our hearts on the Veterans Council, the Diggins family, for their role in making this display happen. We're proud of it, and we are going to make certain that it becomes a hallmark of this Town Hall in the future. I want, many of you who don't know what this is, it's not part of my normal T-O-N-A, I can tell you that. So, but I do want to thank the Diggins family, on behalf of the town, a grateful town, and the Veterans Council, who are, consist of representatives of all of the veterans in this community. We want to thank you for all that you do.
At this time, we are going to have the poem read that's on the inside cover, for those of you fortunate to have a program. And we're going to have the Rolling Thunder, and they're going to read that to us right So many fates are left unknown, so many rumors are bound, so many families ask the question, when will the answers be found? So many years have come and gone, sometimes hope is hard to keep. There's some who feel that there's none, and in some, it's buried deep. The pain is in not knowing how to put loved ones to rest when there is no way to prove they have passed the final test. But no matter what the answers, we can't let this cause alone until each and every one of them is found and brought back home. At this time, we are going to have the reading of the plaque and the unveiling of, a reading of the inscription and the unveiling of the plaque by John J. Diggins. And if I could, if you'd indulge me for one minute, I'd like to call our former Chair, Board of Selectmen to assist me, Laura Burns, to unveil the plaque.
Good evening. On behalf of my family, it's an honor for us to be here. I'm such a great award. I can live in the town for 35 years. My brother, both veterans. My brother's a West Point grad, and I'm a GY exclusionary veteran, still in the reserves. It's a great honor to be here. That said, I'm going to... To those who serve, currently serving, never serving in our forces, the United States, to remain ever mindful that enduring peace has always been tainted by the business of personal sacrifice. We are compelled to never forget that while we enjoy our daily pleasures, there are others, including families, who have endured, may still be enduring, the agonies of pain, deprivation, and imprisonment. This empty chair should cause us to pause and recognize more than 90,000 Americans that remained distant from World War I, II, the Korean War, the Cold War, the Vietnam War, the Gulf War, and the global war of terrorism.
So ladies and gentlemen, before I invite you to come up and actually take some photos and see the plaque and all the things for here behind me, I'd like to have some special recognition for some supporters, as was mentioned, the Diggins family for their generous donation of the plaque, for Rolling Thunder for their devotion to this cause, for an anonymous Gulf War veteran who provided these ropes and stanchions that you see behind us. And I can assure you, those did not come cheap. The American Legion Post Number 120 for their donation of the two flags, and the Town of Hingham Board of Selectmen for, loaning us, I guess you could call it, the memorial chair. So with that, I also want to thank all of you again for coming out this evening and for making the ride. I know you owe it as important a cause as it is, so. Would you like to say anything before we close, Joe?
I'd just like to thank everyone that came with us today, walked the ride, but also Coleman Neay for sending out that initial email, and Keith for, you know, taking this on. We're hoping to do this all, every town across the Commonwealth, 351 towns. We're not even a quarter of the way there, but if you know anyone in surrounding towns that would like to, you know, do the same, get ahold of Keith, he knows how to get ahold of me. And again, too, we'd like to just do this right across the Commonwealth, so that everyone understands the losses that these families still feel, and, you know, we just, we can never forget. So, thank you all.
Thank you. We're back again. We had a, it was, I think, a very memorable ceremony downstairs on the MIA POW chair. I thought the comments, and more importantly, the recognition for the veterans group continues, and Keith just does, he really does great work. And we had good comments in Rolling Thunder. They kept the motorcycles turned off during the ceremony, so it went very, very well. And that will be, I understand, Bob, that's going to be on video?
Yes, that's about it, the video.
Okay, so it'll be...
It'll tie into the meeting.
Okay, they'll have it as part of our meeting on upcoming broadcasts. Okay. Our next guest, Sandy, nice to have you. Sandy Peavy, the Chairman of our Cable Advisory Committee.
It's been a while.
It has been a while since you've been here, and your folks are up and running, and I spend one day a month in front of a camera doing all sorts of good things.
Good.
It's fun, it's fun. So, welcome.
Excellent.
So if you could tell the folks at home what you're about this evening, that would be helpful.
Okay. What, as you know, and hopefully the folks at home know, HCAN, Hingham Cable and Media Inc., which was... and Media, Inc., which was established by the Board of Selectmen in 2011, and took over in addition to the public access in 2012, the government access channel, and so therefore is responsible for taping and broadcasting this meeting and other meetings around town. School committee has been making lots of use of the money the Selectmen approved for putting the robotic cameras in their meeting room, and we have robotic cameras here, and in other committee meeting rooms around Town Hall. And we have a third channel in Hingham in addition to the two that are run by H-CAM, and that's the education channel. And that has actually been a part of the Town of Hingham for longer than the other two, run by the school with some equipment provided by Comcast. But when Comcast shut down its public access and government and educational access program in 2008, when we negotiated the new agreement with them, the town, together with the school, took over the education channel full-time. And we were able to get some new equipment for the studio in the high school. And one of the things that we are required to do under the Comcast franchise agreement under which Comcast gives us money is to provide training for people in Hingham in television production. And before we had H-CAM, and while H-CAM was getting up and going, we've provided that training through the high school by funding with the cable funds, two TV production classes. And one of the things we're asking for this evening will be to continue that funding for the two classes for fiscal year 2014. But then as H-CAM is becoming more and more involved in training people in Hingham, which it is already doing, and within next year will be doing more, we'll cut that back to one program at the high school, but we will want to continue funding at least one program at the high school because it's important that the young people learn these skills and learn about television production because they're the future residents who will come to H-CAM and be our volunteers there. So we don't want to lose that particular segment of our population, so we'll want to continue that. But that's actually number two in my memo, asking you for money, and I think it's hopefully not particularly controversial. And we do have a figure which we got from Dot Gallagher for how much that's going to cost exactly for fiscal year 2014, and we've made an estimate for fiscal year 2015 on the assumption that it would be half of that plus some more because there will be increases in perhaps salary, maybe in benefits, whatever. So for fiscal year 15, we're asking for not to exceed figure rather than a specific dollar amount, which we won't have for a while. But our big reason for coming here is the Cable TV Advisory Committee has been concerned this year that we don't have as vibrant and as much programming on the educational channel as we would like and as we are getting on the other two channels. But the high school just does not have the budget or the capability to put the additional people that would be needed to do this within the school budget. So what we are going to ask for is for the Board of Selectmen to fund $23,000 for this year, and when we see how it goes, we may be asking for more for next year, we'll see. This is, this is our pilot year, so to speak, of turning over to H-CAM the job of providing some original programming for the educational channel specifically. And I've set out in the memo in great detail about what we went through coming to the conclusion that the best way to do this was to do it in partnership with H-CAM. And I'll just very briefly go through that. We started out thinking, well, we'll have a town employee. We did talk to Dot Gallagher, and she said, "That was just great. She supported us completely in what we want to do, but didn't want it to be a school department employee," which causes all kinds of problems, you know, administrative and all for her. Talked to Ted, and he told me how we could do it with a town employee, and went through with me all of the administrative problems that we would have to deal with here at the town level in order to do this, but he didn't say no. But I went back and said, "Just a minute, this is a lot of work for what we want. It's so simple what we want. We want a person to spend about half-time, to go around to the schools, to get to know the teachers, the librarians, and the good things and the great things that are going on in all of the schools in Hingham, we want to be able to feature on our education channel." So Eric, who comes to all of our Cable Advisory meetings, he is the Executive Director of H-CAM, said, "Well, you know, have you considered partnering with H-CAM to do this?" He said, "You know, we could use maybe a part-time person ourselves to devote to government and public access work, and if we had the half-time person for the education channel, be the other half of this person, and that would give a lot of flexibility because it wouldn't have to be 20 hours every week. It could be 40 hours one week and 10 hours another week. It could be whatever was needed." And we would hire that person as an H-CAM employee if the town would be able to fund the salary of that person. So that's what we started working on, and we worked and we worked, and we had done a statement of work in quite a bit of detail. Sky Factster is now on our committee, and he's not here tonight, but he's been very much involved in this, and he used to be the library media teacher at the high school before he retired, and Katie Gallagher, who is here tonight, took over that position. So Sky's very involved in this and did a lot of work on suggesting how this would need to be done and what kind of person we would need, and I think that what we've come up with that's in the supplemental agreement is going to be very exciting for the schools and for the education channel. And we figured out how much money that we would have in this year's budget to do this, and we came up with the $23,000 that we feel very confident about. We'll probably have a little bit more, but the 23 is at the short end of what we can be sure we're going to be getting from the cable operating funds that we get from Comcast and Verizon after we take out the money that we need to fund the two classes at the high school. And we, the agreement would provide that this is provided quarterly to H-CAM, and they're going to hire someone and take off, and we're looking for exciting things to happen. Those of you who saw the Roger Bodie video, had a little bit of a peek at some of the things that can be done, and we'll now have a person who will be charged with thinking them up and carrying them out and working with the schools to come up with great programs. So that's what we're asking for, and now we're here to answer questions that you may have.
Thank you. Can I ask the Town Administrator to comment further, any additional...
Yeah, a couple of comments. One, I want to make sure that the Board understands clearly that what these folks, they're not asking, when they say the town is going to pay, it is the cable access money that the town has. So no new budget obligations for myself. I could tell you the work I've done with H-CAM in really a short period of time has just been outstanding, and so I would give you my recommendation, I think this is worthwhile on both fronts. You can still hear the sound of the motorcycles outside. Within a short period of time, you'll see a video, I was a little late getting to our meeting earlier, H-CAM was down at the shipyard, meeting them as they gathered, and they attached these little tiny video cameras to the front of their bikes so that we're going to actually, all the citizens are going to be able to see them having driven through town, Rolling Thunder rolling through town. And, you know, this is the tip of the iceberg of what they can do, so, you know, I totally endorse this for you.
Mr. Healy, you get to go first.
I really don't have any questions. Do you anticipate that there'll be enough educational programming to keep the interest of the viewer in the, through the...
We're anticipating there will be more than enough, and that next year we will be coming here and saying, "We want some more time for this person on the education channel," and we'll be wanting to use the money that we're now using for training to be added to this, and we think that we're taking the first step and that it will turn out to be something we'll want more of. There's lots going on in the schools, but nobody knows about it, so.
Will you be doing, I've got tons of questions. And Eric's doing a terrific job.
Yes.
A superb job, and has the cutest little kid in the world. And if anybody wants to see a picture, he is available. The, your memo was great. I wish we'd gotten it earlier, because I think I'm going to ask you some stuff that's probably in the memo. Do we at some point get to see the revenue flows that are coming in? Because are you comfortable that there's, because I've been watching my cable access fee, and it's been going up, but is it enough to keep you going?
Oh, yes, oh, yes. I actually brought with me, because I thought you might ask a question like this. This is the run, and I get these periodically from Sue Nickerson, who runs them. They're very hard to understand. I've spent hours sitting down with her, having her explain to me how to read them, but I'll pass them out anyway.
Excellent. So you guys are comfortable there's money to do this?
Right. What you need to look at is the last couple of pages.
Okay, good.
And we've figured it all out, but I will pass these along, and let's see, one, two, three, four, five, okay.
Were you funding the building of a TV studio at the new middle school?
No, we're not funding that. I don't know what's going on with the funding of the TV. I understand there is going to be some...
Yeah, we've been a part of discussions in terms of steering them to buy equipment that will match with the high school and what's in our studio, because the goal is to have continuity through and through so that when you learn in the middle school, it's a natural flow on from there. There hasn't been any talk about the funding source for that.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, the numbers are too small for me to put up.
Yes, they are. This is how I get them for Sue. I don't know how to make them bigger.
They look like they're good numbers. They're nice, they're big.
Yes, they're large.
Healthy.
You mean, there are a lot of digits.
They're healthy.
What you have there is the operating account. That has the figures that come in, and if you look, let's see.
I could take them through if you want.
You can take them through, you understand it.
Just as a rough overview, the first page will show you the cash account, and the cash account is usually a good mirror of what's going on in the activity. I mean, there's obviously support for all the activity below it, but they started out the year with $331,912.58, see it on the front page. They added revenue of $445,000, they spent $484,000, and they ended up the year with $293,000. So you could see heavy revenue coming in, and their expenses are tracking pretty close to their revenue, actually.
You've come a long way in the schools, too, because BK, before Katie, it was, the high school was adequate, and the middle school was sort of, kind of, okay, but now they're both really, really nice areas, and really, I assume we've got a lot of kids that are doing stuff. Will you be doing, or do you think you'll be doing like the concerts the kids have and the plays and some of the sports?
Yes, the sports, I think, are already being done, and when we get to the part about the fields, we'll talk a little bit more about what more we'd like to do, or H-CAM would like to do, I will say.
I'll let, I'll let you go there.
Okay. Do you want to do that now, or do you want to wait until we...
Let me just stop the fields. We don't have a number on the fields, I understand?
No, that's right.
Okay, so, I mean, this is educational only for information.
It's educational only, and we want to make sure that we're going in the direction that you're happy with having us go so that we don't put in a lot of work and then have you say, "Oh, no, we don't want to use cable funds to do this." So just in general, it's a sort of a, to let us know if you have some big, huge problems.
Mr. Healy has a question.
Perhaps then you could expand on precisely what you mean by educational. Is this something that you, put some programming to teach people to do things, or show people what's being done by the students at the high school or the junior high? Exactly what does this mean?
We're hoping to be able to show what's being done at all of the schools, even the elementary level. That's it. We hope this person who will be hired by H-CAM will go around to every school in Hingham, get to know the media teachers, the librarians, and keep on top of what's going on in the school, develop relationships with these people so that when something's coming up in a school, they'll get a phone call and say, "Hey, we're having a program that's going to do this and so," or "We've got a teacher who's got this really great idea to present to her students or his students, X, and, you know, we'd kind of like to have you come in and take that and show it because it's unusual and..."
Well, just to follow up with that, if I might, does that mean then that for those parents who are working and can't attend the recitals and...
They can watch them.
They can watch it on the cable?
Yes, yes.
Can they do that now, or is that...
We don't have that kind, that depth of programming on the education channel yet. That's what we want to develop.
Okay.
Will you also take a look at traces? That's one of my favorite parts that's probably the least known, and I think the kids that are in traces do some totally amazing things.
Yeah, I think this individual's going to be in the schools, and that's a very broad word, the schools, in the district, looking around at various different styles and types of educational things that are happening.
The stuff on the senior projects, the art shows that they have, it's hard to believe some of this is done by young people in high schools and schools.
I think it's, and the idea is that it's really going to help to show the culture of the community a little bit more by getting that representative sampling from an area that right now maybe we're not getting as much as we'd like to, so.
Okay, anything else?
Can she talk just a little bit about the proposed use for the high school fields?
Sure. I'm going to turn that over to Eric because it gets a little technical. We had big drawings out last night, we had Ed Schrader from the school committee walking us through what it was going to look like, but Eric actually understands the technical details.
So what happened is, as we saw this field project happening, and we didn't hear anything about television capabilities being necessarily included with it, though it's out of the educational realm and not something that H-CAM necessarily handles at this time, you know, as the nine-to-nine, AM-to PM organization, we're there. So we sort of took an advisory capacity in that and brought it to the attention of the Cable Advisory Committee and said, "Hey, we think this would be a great opportunity to put in some infrastructure here, even just to allow in the future, if we don't do it right now, the capacity, the ability to broadcast events from the fields." So we've started looking at that and what that's going to take, and the good news is that 90% of what we need is already there, but there is about probably a little 10%, little thing that we'd have to do, namely connecting the press box to the school so that we could get television data, internet, phone out to that building. Rough numbers are around $3,000 for the conduit to do that, so that's probably what we'll be looking at and proposing. I say "we," I speak at this point for the Cable Advisory Committee. So, but we want to get some more firm numbers on that before...
So you'll come back to us?
Right, with firm numbers, right.
I think this is wonderful.
Yeah, and that's not including the actual infrastructure that will ultimately hold that signal in those lines, but to at least provide that possibility so that we're not 10, 15, 20 years into this field and saying, "Gee, I wish we had done this 20 years ago."
I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll be back, or we'll give Betty something...
Yeah, I was going to suggest, this is the first I've seen these numbers, and what I'd like to see as well, you know, there was some negative reaction initially when we launched this. So, you know, while we've been supportive as a Board, it's good to make sure we're addressing all of the concerns that have been raised. So when you come back, Sandy, as soon as we can squeeze you in, this will not be long, any comments that you might have, positive and negative, that we can, that would help us share. I mean, you've brought one up, which is the programming. I'm sure that's, that might be in the comments, but anything like that would be helpful to us because it's not our money.
It's the people's money.
It's the people's money directly, and I want to be sure that they're satisfied so that we're doing the things that they want, that...
And while you're on money, I have, what I've given you is the operating budget. As you know, we got some capital money from Comcast and Verizon, and it's still coming in, the last... The last Verizon payment will be in a year from now. We just got the 2013 payment from them of $40,000. And I have the capital account, and that's just one sheet, and it's easier to read. And I've circled the figure, which is the ending balance as of the end of the fiscal year, end of June.
Okay.
And if you'll add $40,000 that just came in in the last couple of weeks, that will tell you what the capital budget is now. And we'll be getting another $20,000 a year from now. And that's what we have to spend on capital. And we would propose the $3,000, or whatever it turns out to be for this conduit, would come out of that account.
Capital.
Yeah.
This is great. And you guys are in good shape.
Yeah. And with regard to what HCAM is doing, we have a beautiful 2012 annual report, and we're in the process now of putting together a 2013, which we're due to present to you in a few weeks or perhaps a couple of months.
Okay. We don't...
Yeah. You'll be seeing that.
Okay. Thank you, Sandy.
Okay.
So, if you can get that information to us, we'll vote for it all as soon as you got it.
Okay. Now, what information, I want to be sure that I know...
Would you like to hear customer comments that you have?
I don't know that we've got, have we gotten... The Cable Advisory Committee doesn't get customer comments.
HCAM.
I don't know whether HCAM has gotten customer comments or not.
Maybe we could do some of that when they give us their annual report?
I think that would be the annual report from HCAM, would be the time to look at that.
I want to see whatever you have.
I think that's due, I can't recall when the...
Well, you'd have the 2012. I don't know if you've got it.
I have the 2012.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's good. Just, I think we want to share with the folks at home, it's their money. Are they getting, I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Right. But what we really would like tonight, and that's so that we can get out some, you know, advertise for the position and start interviewing people, is the supplemental grant agreement, because we'd like to get that started as close to the beginning of the school year as we can.
And we're getting there.
And we're getting awful close.
We still have to post the position and interview, so.
The council reviewed this on the...
Yep.
Yep. Okay. Sure. Richard?
I'll move that we sign the supplemental grant agreement by and between the town of Hingham and the Hingham Community Access and Media, Inc.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
This is the second one here.
Yeah. That's the one I want to hold until we get all the money. And I'll wait till next Wednesday, if you can get us that.
Okay. The funding of the teaching, of the teaching...
Yeah, I don't think we can wait.
No, that's the one they need, actually, because they can't hire.
You need the second one? On this one?
Yeah, they can't hire.
Oh.
Well, yeah. The supplemental grant agreement is the one that we need, or we can't hire, because this is the one that allows HCAM to go out and hire someone. What the school would like, because they're budgeting for these positions that are starting in September, was the approval of the two classes.
Correct.
At that, the selectmen have approved that for the last several years. So, this is just a, that's just a continuation of what's been done.
But if you don't approve the two items, the two numbers here, then the school department can't go out and hire.
Right. Yeah. The school department would really like to have...
It's August, September, just around the corner.
I see a school committee. I think so. Okay.
Okay.
Irma?
I move to approve the expenditure of $36,208 of cable funds for two cable TV production classes in the high school for fiscal 2014, and an amount not to exceed $20,000 for one production class in fiscal 2015.
Second, then.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the numbers.
I will schedule with Eric a meeting for him to come in with HCAM to review their annual financial report and to deal with the comments that you were looking for.
Okay. And as soon as we get a firm figure on the fields, we will be back. We'll get in touch with Betty and let her schedule that.
We have something to vote on.
Yeah, to vote on. Right. So, we can go ahead and put that in.
Okay.
Thank you for...
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Okay. The next item is an informational item. At town meeting, we, one of the last articles was a discussion on the Whitney Wharf pedestrian bridge. And the town administrator has had some discussions with the interested parties, and maybe he could update the board on those discussions.
Sure. This is actually late this afternoon, early this evening. I had the pleasure of speaking with the property owner regarding the easement. And as the board knows, these have been difficult negotiations to find a solution. It's a small piece of property. We're accessing a piece of it that the property owner uses. The bridge design and calls for it to come across the spillway from Whitney Wharf Bridge to land on the backside of the Three Otis Street property. And that property, part of the property is being used by the owner for his marine business. And we just couldn't find a replication place for that. This afternoon, Mr. Bond proposed a float in the harbor, moored permanently, that would access his, allow the access of his equipment, similar to what you see out there in certain regards, diving platforms or other floats that the community has. I checked with the harbor master, and he thought it was a workable solution. We haven't worked out the fine details, and sometimes the fine details become harder to work out. But it seemed like a remarkably promising idea that wouldn't impact Iron Horse Park, that wouldn't, you know, require us to find other property for him throughout the community. So, I am remarkably optimistic, having heard through that and, as you know, having worked on this for almost a year now.
Where would he put that little piece of moving equipment? What is it, a small cat?
We think that that could be located on the spillway side of the bridge.
And screened.
Ducked away and screened sufficient that he could access it and use it. Although, he wouldn't need a lot of that, because he uses that to lift it out of the water and onto the land. And he actually wouldn't be lifting it out of the water, it'd be going from a boat to a dock. Like I said, there are some issues that we have to work through, but it seems like a promising solution to a rather vexing problem.
So, it resolves the Iron Horse Park issue?
Correct.
And that's the most promising part of this?
Correct.
And it doesn't change anything else?
Doesn't. As you know, we're in negotiations for the lease, and, you know, Mr. Bond has requested a renewal of the lease at the existing terms that we have right now. And I haven't, you know, I'm working through those numbers to get back to you on, but that seems promising, too.
Okay. Mr. Haley?
That's good news. Sounds like it's going to work out.
So, we need details, and then...
We're working on it. I have, I've asked the harbor master to work with real estate counsel to make sure that we can do what we think we can do. Ken's first take at it was, it was a great idea. And I think both of us said, "I wonder why we didn't think about this earlier." You know, you stare at a problem long enough, and then there's an easier solution, and you just never got to it. Although, perhaps there's some other reason why we hadn't thought of it, and it'll come out in the next few weeks when people comment on it. But, you know, we were trying to think of what was wrong with the idea, because we couldn't figure out why we didn't think of it earlier.
Okay. That's good. So, excellent. Work in progress.
Work in progress. We hope to have something to you within either, if not for your next meeting, certainly for your meeting at the end of August.
Very good.
Well done.
Well done.
I have to give all the credit to the property owner, Mr. Bond. He came up with the idea. I just could recognize the opportunity when I saw it.
Let me, before Carol, I know the press has a question, but let me just, it's probably what I, we probably should have done. I apologize. The issue at hand is a negotiation that took place just before town meeting. It was a difficult negotiation, and I'll be very frank, I voted for it reluctantly in order to get a deal done. The new member of the Board of Selectmen had some objections to the arrangement and asked if we could find another solution. And as a result of that, we went back to the owner, the property owner, and we have another solution, which was what we were hopinging that would be more protective of the waterfront and less disruptive. So, hopefully, that explains the issue for the public.
I'm not really sure of the issue, I mean, the background of it. Is it...
You want to, go ahead, just so they can hear you, Carol. We'll fix this mic one of these days.
Maybe you can get people's faces instead of their backs. I just want to check what was in the town meeting warrant and what was decided. That information's kind of still the same? Because otherwise, could we have the background, if anything's changed from that? Because I know that...
No, the only thing that's...
...some land, and so the float would be inside of the land?
That's correct.
And is there any money involved with this?
We haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay, so the financial details have worked out?
So, what we, town meeting afforded the selectmen the opportunity, not the requirement, but the opportunity to erect a structure on Iron Horse Park, approximately 400 square feet, and ask the legislature to be able to grant an easement to the property owner to use that structure. We weren't giving the land away, but we're giving the legal right to use the land. And, you know, that was problematic, because it would require a structure on Iron Horse Park, which, you know, there was certainly some consternation over. So, this solution would eliminate that, and we would provide, put a float of some type out in the harbor near the mooring field, I would assume, that's compatible with the mooring operator to be able to use it. The purpose for the structure was to store marine equipment, mooring balls and the sticks that are used to create moorings. And so, now, they wouldn't have to actually bring them onto shore, they could leave them there. Again, we're not sure 100% yet, but, you know, it seems like, at first blush, a reasonable approach to pursue.
And so, Lisa talking about renewing, and also, so I can sit down, the lease that you mentioned, you're renewing, and also, is there some easement that he's going to be granting the town? Is that part of this?
Correct. In order for us to put the bridge, the Whitney Wharf Bridge, it was approved in the 2012 meeting, it has to come across the spillway from Whitney Wharf Bridge, and it lands on Three Otis Street, the property. And it lands on the backside of that property. And right now, if you look at that property, it's uneven as it approaches, from the building as it approaches the water. And clearly, we can't put a bridge and have a landing there and have, you know, that unevenness there. So, we're going to have to do some work there, in addition to actually landing the bridge there. And we can't land municipal property on someone's private property without their permission. And so, that's the need for the easement from Mr. Bond to allow us to land the bridge there. The parking lease that you spoke of, that I spoke of, is, in order for Bear Cove Marina to operate, the number of slips they have and the coffee shop that they have there, they need to acquire nine parking spaces. And the town leases them, those nine parking spaces, to the property owner for $40,000 per year. And we've had a three-year agreement. The agreement expires December 31st this year, and we are in negotiations, which I just advised the board that they, the proposal from the property owner is to maintain the existing arrangement for another three years.
So, it's $40,000 a year?
Per year.
And what's the sense of the easement then that we need to ask him for to build the bridge?
That's the negotiation we're talking about. That's the approval we got at town meeting. The original solution that we had going to town meeting was, we were going to give him an easement to use Iron Horse Park, and he was going to give us an easement to use the back of his property.
Did he sell to do that?
Now, what we're going to do is, instead of giving him an easement to use Iron Horse Park, we're going to try to figure out if it's possible to put this float out, and then he'll give us the easement for the back of his property to land the bridge.
So, once the other easement is figured out, he'll give you the easement, once you figure out the float arrangement?
Once we figure out, say, out the other way around. Once we figure out the float arrangement, then he'll give us the easement, because he won't, he will no longer need to use the area behind his building, because the float will take care of his space needs.
Okay. And if the float doesn't work out, you just have to figure it some other way.
We'll be back at the drawing board.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Haley?
I would just like to publicly thank Ms. Lauter and Mr. Bufo for their willingness to take yet again another look at this issue. And I think that this is going to be a better solution and one that will work well for the harbor generally.
Well, thank you. Just before I recognize one other speaker, I just want to put forth that we have to go to the state for permission on this, to get it all done. And it's, it may be as simple, go ahead.
We have to go to the state if we're going to grant an easement to the property owner from Iron Horse Park. If we're not doing that, we do not have to go to the state.
That's even better. Because my concern was, before we go to the, and this was a chair's feeling, if there was no other solution, and we had to go back to the original proposal, we need, we needed to have unanimity on the board to bring it to the state. They don't like to deal with things there that we're not together on. And Mr. Haley had a very valid concern that had to be addressed. And as a result of his concern, we have addressed that issue, it seems, assuming everything works out. Is that a...
Correct. And also, time. You know, the Harbor Development Committee is working very diligently. The bridge is a linchpin to their, the plan of creating a walkway along the entire harbor. The legislative process that we were required to go through with Article 40 would probably take a year to a year and a half to move through. So, if this solution works, construction can probably begin in the spring.
That's great. Okay. Mr. Hershey?
Yes, John Hershey. I just want to make it clear that what you did in the agreement, you gave him nine spaces. He's paying rent for those nine spaces. But now, last year, you gave him five more unwillingly. When you did Iron Horse Park, you took down the fence. Now, people are parking there. Okay? I would think in common sense that you wouldn't increase the parking down there for him. That's what's benefiting. You'd put no parking signs there, which haven't done yet, a sawhorses. Number two, I'll be interested to see how this unfolds with the, with the square footage of this float he's talking about. I have concerns that's going to churn into more marina space for his boats to be more there on the floats. I think that's what's coming down to. I smell a rack. Thank you very much.
Chairman, I think I could answer both of those questions.
Sure, answer, Mr.-
In terms of the parking, there is no intention to increase the parking long-term in that area. The fence came down because the parking that was against the water is going to move to the fence and a walkway around the edge of the water is going to take the spot of those parking spots in the Harbor Development Plan. So, we just haven't reenacted that, because we don't want to create a walking path that doesn't go anywhere. We're waiting for the bridge to come in place. So, for those- I don't have a map in front of me, but you walk along the waterfront and you cross over the town pier. And right now, if you wanted to continue to walk along the waterfront wall, you'd be walking through parking spots. Those spots are now going to move across to the- where the fence area was at Iron Horse Park and the spots that are being moved will become a walkway. So, there will be no increase in parking. And all that parking is public parking, it's not parking for that marina, not exclusive at all. And then, the other issue was the float. And we can very clearly stipulate the uses of that float and the intention is not, in any way, shape, or form, to provide additional boat mooring access to that float. It's simply a storage float. And Harb Master feels very confident, as does our real estate council, that we can craft something that would limit it to that. So, we're not creating more marina space.
John, also, the parking-
Excuse me, do you want to be recognized?
I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Yep, go ahead. You have a question or comment?
I do, a comment for John. Thank you, Mr. Chair. John, the parking there also services the town moorings. And there's a whole lot more town moorings than there are slips for either of the two marinas that we have.
Can I make a follow-up?
Sure.
Question. On this issue, okay? I have pitches, okay? And the only time that those parking spaces of five that I'm talking about are being used is on weekends, okay? And I've seen people come from the marina using those spaces. So, all I'm asking for is, until this is resolved, as far as the walkway goes, why can't we put no parking signs there, instead of giving the Sky Five spaces? I don't believe it's- I don't believe these spaces are being used for the public, I think they're being used for the marina. And that's what I stand for.
Thank you. All right. You raised the issue for the contract and I'm sure Ms. Alexia Otis will discuss it with real estate council on the easement. Okay. So, you expect in a couple of weeks-
I hope to have something for you. I don't think by your meeting of next Wednesday we'll have something, but hopefully by the 22nd we will.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Good solution. Okay, we have some votes to take before we go to selectmen reports. Let's see, Irma, I think you have-
Do you want me to read the first one?
Yeah, could you do the one on the liquor license?
Sure. I move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages liquor license to Brian McCourt for the tour to South Shore at Wampatuck State Park on Saturday, October 5th, 2013, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ted, the next vote has to do with an aluminum closed-top refuse trailer. And this, I understand, is to replace the- one of the trailers that we use. That's all.
Correct. Yep. It's a straight bid, low bid. Pardon?
At the dump.
At the transfer station, yeah. So, as part of their normal capital plan, the reason you have it is because it's over $50,000 and I can't sign contracts in excess of 50 on behalf of the town.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Sure, would you please? Thank you.
I'll move that we enter into a contract with Spectre Manufacturing, Inc., for an aluminum closed-top refuse trailer in the amount of $62,239. Uh, $66,000.
$39,000, okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Betty, the next vote has to do with the waiver of Habitat for Humanity work structure. Could you-
We were contacted by Elder Services. There is a resident who is having a handicapped accessible ramp constructed in front of their home and Habitat for Humanity has donated the labor to construct the ramp itself and requested a waiver of the building permit fee. I spoke to the building commissioner, this sort of thing comes up very rarely and it's a $50 fee that you're being asked to waive.
Okay, okay. Let's see. It's your turn? Your turn.
My turn.
It's your turn.
I move to waive the building permit fee for the construction of a handicap ramp for a Hingham resident to be constructed by Habitat for Humanity.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next one, the Old Colony Hospice quilt in Hingham Town Hall. Is there any additional information on that, Mr.?
We've been requested, I put a picture of it here for Bob to show the audience, we've been requested to use Town Hall to display the quilt for, I believe, a couple of weeks?
Couple of weeks. I did check with the library, think that'd be a great place to display it, but they are booked a year out.
Wow.
Who made it? Do we know? Excuse me, but there wasn't like a whole lot. These are beautiful quilts. I mean, it's not going to hold up the vote, but-
We have a letter in the office, it's in the correspondence file, that details the organization and the efforts, but there will be something down below, you know, where the quilt is displayed to point out the efforts of the organization. I don't remember their-
Mr. Healy has a question.
I've been through the hospice experience twice and from looking at this, it appears that there's some very personal messages on the quilt. And I'm just wondering if the people that put these messages on the quilt are aware that it's intended to be displayed publicly?
Yes.
Okay. That's my only question.
Okay. Any further questions? Mr. Healy?
Okay. Just so you know, Paul, the request came from them to display it. They want to promote, and I'm pretty sure it's Old Colony Hospice, they want to promote their services through the quilts.
Okay. All right. Then I'll move to approve the display of the Old Colony Hospice quilt in Hingham Town Hall. And you said it's for a limited duration?
Correct. Correct. I wanted to say a couple of weeks.
I believe so, but I'm not certain.
If it's longer than that, we'll advise the board.
Okay. It's not a permanent.
So, should we make the approval at the temporary display? Or modify it?
That's okay. Okay. I'll restate it. To- I'll move that we approve the temporary display of the Old Colony Hospice quilt in Hingham Town Hall.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Just one other piece of information. This will come up for discussion on the 22nd as our monthly follow-up to the whole discussion on the sewer commission. I had asked Ted to- Ted had shared with us last time that he'd had a discussion with the town projects engineer concerning if, and I emphasize the word "if," we had to open up North Street to correct what we believe what is the current sewer odor problem. What is the drop-dead date in which we could do that, start the process, and reclose the street? I'll emphasize again, we do not think that this is the solution that will even solve the problem. And I have correspondence that's been, and I'll make copies of this for you all to see, as to whether or not the reopening of the street will cause the odor problem to be corrected. We believe the other solutions that we're pursuing at the moment would do it, but we're coming very close. And if we started in two weeks to the design process, the best we could do would get construction done by November 14th and then we would have to do additional paving in the spring. So, that's for the benefit of the folks who have been sharing with us this, the issue of the odor on North Street. So, if we don't decide if the corrections, which we do not believe will be finished until the end of August, we have some time, but not a lot of time, to proceed with the street odor.
Correct. And that would be proceeding under emergency procedures.
That's correct.
That would not be availing of ourselves, of a proper bid process that usually allows us to procure construction work at a lower rate. So, we would be paying top dollar too. Just-
No, that's good to remind. I thought the interesting part in the documents that I heard about, but I'll make copies, I'll ask Betty to give this to you all. The documents, the engineers over the- this started in 2005 and the recommendations from various engineers are not conclusive that opening the street would solve the problem. And that's been my reluctance to spend that money.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at a document right now from January 28th, January 23rd, 2008, from the, you know, engineers that have been working for the sewer department for 15, 20 years at that point in time. And I can read you one comment. It says, "The cost of this work is significant in a neighborhood of $100,000 and action is not recommended at this time." I mean, you know, as I'm getting more into this, we're finding more documents to show that this was addressed by the sewer commission regularly and repeatedly. And their advice, the advice given to them from their professionals was not to do it. I have some other information that we're looking for on this that regarding $150,000, I think I mentioned this to you on the last time. It struck me as odd that the money was turned over to the general fund. Now, I know why. The reason it was turned over to the general fund is because it belongs to the general fund. Why would you say? Because the $150,000 that the sewer department got from the MBTA was not for solely the SAG issue. It was $100,000 for the MBTA pumping water from the tunnel in the excavation into the MWRA's sewer system, which all the users within the sewer district paid in increased charges, because we pay the bill to the MWRA. And that money was voted, along with another $50,000 that was directed towards the SAG and the issues on the street, that money was voted on by the commission to offset the rate in that year for the full $150,000. And since the way the accounting for the sewer department is, is that they run through a special revenue fund at the end of the year, their surplus or deficit sweeps into the general fund, because the general fund is the ultimate responsibility. And that was the vote of the commission in 192008. That doesn't mean we're not solving the problem. I just want to try to explain some of these moving parts that we are now becoming more and more aware of as we delve into this.
Yeah, and I think it's important to remember that this is a sewer issue that the board hasn't inserted itself on to move it along to get resolved.
And we have an obligation to do that, because the board contracted with the sewer department to run operations, so these are our issues and we're going to deal with it.
We've been doing that for a year or so, so.
Correct.
That's right. Sure.
And maybe in the packet that Roger put together, if we were to have to do North Street now on an emergency basis, would that mean a road scheduled for this year would not get done?
Definitely.
Since we only have a finite amount of money?
Yes.
Definitely.
And we do have some roads in bad shape.
More than one road, because of the size of this expenditure. And it's not just as simple as opening up the road. As I spend a little more time talking about Roger, is part of the problem is where this intersects with Town Brook-
Right.
-and some of the other issues associated with it. It's a very complex construction process.
And then, isn't there the issue, the cascading issue of what happens to ship and cottage?
Hmm, I'm not- I can't comment on that. I don't have that answer.
Yeah, I mean, the issue, I understand it, just to- and that's, this is my understanding, is that we should not do ship and cottage until we get this resolved.
Oh, of course. Definitely.
That's the key.
Definitely.
Because we're just going to add to the problem. Okay. Sure, Mr. Healy?
I have two, actually. I'm a little puzzled that you've got conflicting engineering reports on the recommended fix. And I don't know what events trans occurred to make that happen. And the second is, are we getting any headway with the Board of Health on the inspection records? And what's going on there?
They're working on putting together their records of past inspections, which is taking a little more time than we had thought. But in terms of going forward, I'm getting regular reports from Steve Dempsey, the sewer supervisor, and either Bruce Capman or Susan Rowe in the Board of Health. And those two entities are on the exact identical page. They're granting no variances, they are in every restaurant and requiring compliance and on a regular basis.
I thought I heard Mr. Sylvester say at the last meeting that they're trying to determine which of these facilities are sharing the use of a grease trap, which is not allowed. I'm just a little puzzled as to why what seems to be a straightforward exercise is elusive with respect to disclosure.
I can't-
Not to put you on the spot.
I can't comment on that, but I can look into it and be back to you at your next meeting.
Thank you.
Let me just to your point, I have asked Ted, and he's had conversations with the chairman of the Board of Health, and I think last week, to, I said, "We've got to have a meeting of the minds on how we handle all this stuff, because, one, this has entirely taken too long, two, it's getting bad press for the town of Hingham, rightfully so. And most importantly, the third item is that these people have suffered with this for a long time." So, he was away on vacation when you talked to him and I think sometime next week, you told me he'd be back, I think. And that's when we'll do that. So, I'll-
And however, he did commit over the phone to myself and Bruce, you were in the room when he called, that, you know, he would, you know, commit on behalf of the Board of Health to work diligently on this, to make sure that this, the inspections were being done timely and that we're working in concert with the sewer department.
That's right. Okay, so that's something-
Thank you.
Irma?
Just one more point with that. I can't remember who brought it up, whether it was Randy or one of our residents, that we all assumed that the fog inspections were going on and that all restaurants had their own grease trap. And I think we've all been surprised that perhaps that's not the case.
Correct.
That's, I think that's the issue, that you're going to restate-
And wouldn't it be a shame if we dug up North Street, put in new piping, and the problem didn't go away?
Well, that's the fear that-
Yes.
Excuse me for interrupting, Mr. Chairman, but that's the fear that our project engineer has, that will spend limited resources. We already know where we are with the road budget. We've made a lot of headway in getting annual funding where we need to, to fix the roads that we have throughout the whole town, but to take away a big chunk of resources and, you know, Roger's usually pretty good with his numbers. And I read you a number of 100,000 here from a 2008 report. You know, he thinks that number's going to be between 200 and 300 and his word was more towards 3 than 2.
That's what he told me.
That's a third of our budget.
And asphalt's made of oil.
That's right. That's another issue. All right, one last question, Mr. Healy. Mr. Hershey, sorry.
I just want you to-
Whoever.
Whoever. Close. No, you're here. I'm looking the wrong way. Mr. Hershey?
I want you to realize that when they did downtown for the Green Bush, they had four or five big catch basins left over and it's being stored in the old DPW. I want you to realize that we also have two catch basins down there on North Street and Central Street down there that are sunken. So, how are we going to take care of that problem? Okay? Another question I ask is that I don't like to hear, because I know, I know better. I think we have an excellent health department, the big picture in this town. The Board of Health, I think they're excellent. Okay? I see the work they do. Maybe you don't see as much as I do, but let me give you a, for instance, okay? Bill Peterson, every single Saturday morning, he's down the farmer's market. He's making sure everybody is safe on that issue. He also goes around town. I see him go around town. He doesn't see me, but I see him. I don't miss nothing. He checks all the codes on all the products in the stores. Okay, the guy is excellent. He's second to none. So, I see Susan, what's her name?
Rowe. She's wonderful.
I see her down the harbor every single week, taking samples of the water that's in the bathing beach. So, I don't like to see somebody being picked on or-
Mr. Hershey, nobody's picking on any of them. We're just trusting and verifying.
Well-
That's the nature of Mr. Healy's question.
Yeah.
We're looking for the proof to say that, yes, the inspections have occurred and we want to see the documentation to that effect. That's all. We're not saying anybody's done anything wrong and we wouldn't discuss anybody's performance in a public session. We're just saying we want to prove that the-
I just want to make that clear, because I've lived in town for 65 years and even before that board, the health department, period, I never heard anything about somebody getting sick in town or have to go to the hospital, we have a major problem here with whatever. Okay? It doesn't exist in this town. I just want to bring that up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments on this?
Need some water.
Some water for my gentleman to my left. I'll pass that down. Okay, we're going to go to appointments and what I want to announce, if you, some people have heard this, are two pieces of information. First, Amy Farrell, a former member of the advisory committee, has been appointed by the governor to the Hingham Housing Authority to fill the position that was vacated by the movement of Jim O'Brien. And we thank Jim for all the good service he provides to the town and wish Amy luck. And then, the town moderator today appointed Ted Joyce of Hobart Street and Donna Smallwood of Brewster Road to the advisory committee to fill the two vacant seats on that board. So, congratulations to them and we look forward to working with them shortly. Okay, we have some appointments to make, as it's taken us a little longer than any of us would have liked. We had a number of people to interview and I think we're getting close to, as Irma commented earlier, it's getting to be the August already. It is August already and we've got some positions to fill. So, I've done canvassing and we have some votes to make. So, Mr. Healy, would you-
Sure. I'll move that we appoint Shirley Rydell to the Bear Cove Park Committee for a three-year term ending 2016.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to appoint Eldon Abbott to the Comm. Comm. for a three-year term ending in 2016.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to appoint Scott D. Peterson to the Country Club Management Committee for a three-year term ending in 2016.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. As you may recall, at a town meeting, there was a proposal by some citizens to create a noise committee, a noise bylaw study committee, as, as has been performed in some of the towns. A couple of people have stepped forward to wanting to serve on that committee. The Board hasn't officially voted on how many. My sense was five, but it may be more than that. But we wanted to get it going so that it had time to work and to address this issue for this year's town meeting, which means that work has to be done by December. So, there's three members that we've, who have volunteered, who have stepped forward for this, and that's the purpose of the next vote, so.
Okay, I move to appoint the following to the noise bylaw study committee, Joseph McCracken, Declan Boland, and Dennis King.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And obviously, they'll be back. We have to give them a charter for that. And the last appointment.
There's two.
Two more, sorry.
I'll move to appoint Dave Jones to the Cable TV Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending in 2016.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the last appointment, Irma?
I move to reappoint Scott McMillan as a trustee of G.A.R. Hall for a three-year term ending in 2016.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Selectmen's Reports, I just want to, I wanna ask the town administrator, I don't know if you all know this, I heard this, this week. Town engineer and, and the town administrator met with our, our former employer, the one who sends us a check occasionally, on North Street, and the work. And I hear you have some good news to report about that.
Yes, we met with Representative, Representatives of Verizon. The final phase of the North Street pole relocation project has been hung up in, we've budgeted $70,000 for that remaining bit of work. We had actually sent a check to Verizon for that work. They sent it back and sent us a bill for 84,000. Suffice to say, we had discussions that, that really wasn't gonna work for us. And we came to an agreement that Roger would have pull strings and ropes installed in all of the conduit that's already there, and Verizon lowered their price by approximately 19,000 to seven, actually, sorry, 20,000 to 70, $63,000, about 7,000 under our budget. And the project will be going forward.
Nice, that's a step in the right direction. I understand, Irma, I just heard this, that the person that they appointed for Verizon is from the North Shore?
Correct, he's a former mayor from Salem.
Interesting. So, I know that.
Very, very accommodating and a good person to work through, and they, they understood our issues. We might have put it forth to them a little bluntly, but they understood our issues and they, they responded.
Good.
That's a good time. Last Saturday at 5 o'clock, I had the pleasure of attending the 332nd anniversary of the opening of Old Ship Church. And they had done, I guess since 2004, and they gave recognition to the Board at that time, MacGyver and Tully and Edmondson, who, who encouraged them to do the repair work. And it was a wonderful occasion, but more importantly, I kiddingly said to the engineer architect, he talked in human terms when he described what they did in the, in the facility. That beam in there is one red oak, and I don't know whoever chopped it and trimmed it. It's an awesome, an awesome beam.
Truly.
And the story he told when he opened up the discussion was that in, they, when that church was opened in 1681, that was the year Isaac Newton was born. So, I think they were a little bit ahead of their time in understanding physics, so they, they got it to stay that long. So, congratulations to them. And I asked Tom O'Donnell was there, and I asked him the last time, he could not remember. I didn't expect that he was there, certainly, but the town meeting used to occur in that church. And while it's a most accommodating church, my wife is here, and she can attest that sitting in the pews would make the meetings move very quickly. But it is, and they have, I talked to Reverend Ken, I talked to Ken Brown about someday, maybe a memorial, maybe we could have a meeting there of a short duration, that you wouldn't have to walk far, Paul. The, the fire study, I know people know this is going on. We did not fund some fire requested projects, and there is a committee that has been formed, and that committee has been meeting monthly to start to get their arms around all of the issues. And the good news is Ted has opened up the, the umbrella for them to say, let's take the hats off and think of all the potential solutions before we proceed with the, with the decision to either add to the facilities in terms of buildings, or perhaps there's another way to solve the, the issue. But they know they're on a schedule, and I just wanted to let you know that those meetings are going on. And I had the pleasure of, with Eileen, meeting with Eileen McCracken, and to meet with the archivist that they have hired to, to do some steps on preservation of not only our materials in town records, but a lot of other materials, and giving some guidelines. The state has, I would, as I would hope, they have some guidelines on document retention that would be, you know, that we could certainly adopt and maybe modify. So, she's in that process, this archivist, and to, to start to move. So, they're gonna come before the Board to give us an update on, on that, on that effort. And the last thing I just wanted to raise before I open it up to the, my colleagues is, it has been a question about the legal bills for the town, and I have asked for some explanation, additional explanation to quantify it. And, you know, last year, we spent 342,000 in the, in the legal budget. And maybe, Mr. Alexiades, you could give us some highlights for that, if you have the material with you, or don't, or is Betty? Betty should be the one.
I, I didn't bring it with me.
Okay, I have, I have it here.
But I, I know it pretty well, so.
Okay.
What kind of highlights would you like?
Well, there were a couple of cases that, that have consumed us, I think, and.
That's a summary letter. I know Bruce is looking at, at that.
You want that?
Could I?
Yeah. This is our commitment to make sure the, you know, we said we would look at this, and I wanted to be sure that at least.
So, the significant amount of money was spent on Avalon. The Avalon case, we refer to as the acqui-, first, the, the Board of Appeals, zoning Board of Appeals hearings regarding the 40B project that was proposed, and the work going to set up litigation to defend the town's position that we are over the 10% threshold for affordable housing. And then, the balance of the money that totaled 81,392 was for the acquisition. And if you recall, the acquisition, you know, we spent quite a bit of legal money at the tail end, because we had to do that very quickly. We came to an agreement, you know, just really a very short period of time before town meeting, and we had to close rather quickly in order to exercise that agreement. Another 40B, SEB LLC on Main Street is active right now, running at 16,000 from last year. The Penny Collins action on the Ridgewood Crossing Affordable Housing Unit, we've spent 28, almost 29,000 on, and that's still ongoing. We spent.
Could I just, on that, for the, again, just so, when a case like this, which was not planned.
Actually, none of these cases were planned.
And this one in particular, as you know, it's been in the press, and I don't wanna divulge too much information, because it's an ongoing investigation of a seminal and potential criminal nature. But to advise that the state and the federal government has actively involved on a legal basis in this.
Correct.
So, there will be more on this case.
Yes. We spent 24,000, a little over 24,000 regarding the high school field, helping the Planning Board through their deliberations.
Now, that's not, that comes out of the legal budget, not the.
That comes out of the legal budget, correct? Yeah.
Not the school field.
This was our side of the work that we had to do to help move through that process. And those are the higher cases that we had. Any other specific highlights you want?
No, I just, we spent, we gave one of our former attorneys 91,000, and I have the general description. I don't know if, do we have any successes from that? Avalon was a big piece of that.
So, as you know, last year was really a partial year on deployment of how we want to manage legal affairs in the town. Last year, we still had general counsel, Murphy, Toomey, Hesse, Lehane. They worked for us through about six months of the year. And then we, then deployed the process of the four attorneys that we used to be our legal team. And we spent about 91,000 with Jim's firm, and Jim billed in more of a general sense across whatever work he was, he was doing. And we didn't, you know, Jim wasn't geared up to do the budgeting that we do with all the others, where we assign them a case. And we had a request from the Conservation Commission just yesterday to have counsel. And, you know, before we assign counsel, we look at the issue to make sure it's the right counsel, and then we ask counsel for an estimate of what they think the time will be. We, we understand that it's hard as an attorney to estimate time particularly, like we can do on a road job or a construction job, because of the nature of litigation is, and legal matters sometimes is, is hard to see where you're gonna wind up. But, you know, they come back to us with a number, and if the number is gonna be exceeded, they let us know. And so, that gives us an opportunity to take a step back and say, you know, is this the right course of action? You know, sometimes I've used this analogy before, you step in the pond, and you think it's only up to your, you know, ankle, but before you know it, you're, you know, up to your hips. We don't wanna be in those situations. We wanna try to avoid them as much as possible, or at least understand why we're doing that. Sometimes litigation's expensive, and, you know, we have to proceed through it for the better of the town. But we wanna know that. We don't wanna be in the situation where, at the end of the year, we, we have a big bill, and we didn't know why we got it.
And, and one of the things that, in this particular case, we spent a lot of money in one particular area with that firm, and they gave us an estimate, and unfortunately, the estimate was exceeded. But the guideline we had established about coming back to this Board to making sure that, so that we had tighter controls, that's what advisory has asked us to do.
Correct.
And that did not happen till it was an ex post facto bill. And, and that's unfortunate on both parts, but the issue is what we're spending on, on the four attorneys that we have is for what I believe, for good purpose. And more importantly, has given the controls that we have in face, I'm, I'm confident that, that as we do a better job at planning this, that we'll, we'll be more in line. So, you know, the last year was a learning year, but we're, we're starting that. So, I'll open it up to comments or questions. I, I sent to, I asked the town administrator to send to you whatever information we have specifically on billing for any of them. In one case, in Mr. Ryan's case, he's the attorney for the most part for the water company, and that money, while it's in our legal budget, is charged to the, is charged to the funds for, that were allocated by town meeting for the water portion of that. But the others are not, so. And any other comments, Mr. Shure, or Mr. Healy?
I have had the pleasure of receiving the benefit of Ms. Murphy's able legal assistance while I served as a Planning Board member, most notably on the high school field project. And no matter where you come down on that, that was a, a project that generated a lot of interest, if you will, on both sides of the issue. And there was some very complicated legal principles that the Planning Board had to weave into its treatment of the application. And, you know, the, part of the benefit here is that, you know, the Board, the Director of Community Planning learns from these experiences, so that the, the need to call legal counsel or rely on whoever that lawyer is, is less acute, hopefully, in future projects. You know, without divulging anything in particular, just on the, listening to Mr. Ryan, I found his explanations very clear, logical, and I, and I think that he takes a sensible approach. So, what I'm trying to say in a kind of a windy way here is I think we're getting a good value for the money we spend. Yes, the legal bill is high, it's very high, but we have a lot of things cooking in the fire. And, you know, we, we haven't been sued, our decisions are standing up, and I think the money is, despite its rather hefty figure, is well-spent. That's my two cents.
I thank Ted for the data that he's given me, and I had asked a couple of concerns. I was concerned that we've spent over 20,000 this year on planning, the Planning Board, and was looking to see the breakdown of that, and hopefully, that's not gonna continue. And maybe, Paul, you've hit upon why we have lots of new people, so maybe we're paying for it this year. The other thing on the sheet that we were given, there were categories called general, and they were very large, 15,000, 18,000. So, I've been given the raw detail, which I was kinda hoping was in an Excel spreadsheet or something, but it isn't. But if we could just keep an eye on that, I have a concern, going back to my advisory days, that if you look at a graph of legal expenses, and then look at the reserve fund transfers, as also a graph, it is definitely growing. So, just to kind of trust but verify and keep an eye on it. And then also, I'd like to ensure that everything that's over 5,000 does come back to the Board of Slackman for approval, 'cause that's the bogey we've got.
Okay. Paul? All good points. I can say that when I first started on the Planning Board, we had what you call formas, which are simply developing house lots on pieces of property that are but public ways, and we had some subdivisions. But as time went on, the manner and method of development drifted away from that. You don't see the same amount of subdivisions being built in town like you once did. And instead, we've got these rather significant developments that have, you know, been built in the, in the last 10 or 15 years. The shipyard was a massive effort. Derby shops, we've got the South Hingham Industrial Park. Couple that with the zoning initiatives necessarily to keep the town's ability to grow sensibly vibrant, it is, it is very challenging. It's extremely challenging. And I think that, you know, that the town in general has done a fine job in managing that. But when we go in to dealing with applicants that come in with a team of, you know, professionals, you know, local counsel, in-town counsel, landscape engineers, professional engineers, architects, you know, traffic engineers, I mean, it, it's a full-court press oftentimes. And I just don't, you know, think you're going on a gunfight with, with a knife. You, you have to be ready. And having, you know, competent legal counsel in those circumstances is vital.
I just, I thought, one, I wanted to put this out into the public, understand that with absent that 91,000, we would have been within our budget, and there are a couple of other unanticipated cases. And the interesting part is, we have a town, Newtown Council, who handles just municipal work, and John Cufflin, and his bill's about 25,000. Most of his work is done with us by phone, and so we are not spending a lot of time on municipal issues. It's mostly the real estate issues and litigious issues left over that have to be addressed. So, but I think Irma makes a good point, and Paul as well, but this is something we have to pay attention to. And just, I, I had to call the town administrator today, 'cause I got a call from somebody who was threatening to sue. And I said, they had tried to resolve the issue, and they haven't, and now that's another case. It's another real estate case that Ted is trying to work our way through. So, that's what we have to do. Anyway, okay. If there are no other comments, Betty, did I miss? If there are no other comments, Betty, did I miss anything? No?
I just have one thing to say.
And I got your question.
Sure.
I just want to let the, the residents know that last Friday night at midnight, 12:00 AM, I made my way over to the police station, and I addressed the midnight to 8 shift. I came from that shift, I worked it for over 10 years, and as I walked through those doors, I had that familiar feeling of fatigue, those are very hard hours, the gentlemen that I spoke to, the officers, were all respectful, squared away, their mission is vital, they protect us at night while we sleep, and I think the town is in good hands, I just want the town to know that. I think that the police department is, is doing an excellent job. I met with the 4 to 12 shift, and I plan on meeting the fire department personnel shortly, so, just putting it out there for you.
Irma?
I want to congratulate all of the businesses in town that won, standing with South Shore Living with the favorites, the, I'm not going to name them, because I'll miss somebody, and then I'll be in real hot water. There were lots and lots of Hingham businesses and restaurants that all won either first place, second place, whatever the, the kind of ranking is, it was a very good showing for Hingham. And then also, in a new magazine, who I'm going to probably boot the title of, Hingham Living, what is it? Hingham Life, thank you, Carol. Bob Mosher, who is one of our two preeminent carvers in town, and really, really is super, and Bill Sarnie's the other one, if there are others, I apologize. Bob got a really nice write-up in there, so if anybody can catch that magazine, either of those, nice job.
Thank you, thank you for that. Anything else, Mr. Betty? Okay, okay, we're going to adjourn to executive session, not to return for the purpose of discussing a personal contract negotiation, and we, just to remind you, we'll be back next Wednesday at 7 o'clock, and we all hope you have a happy and safe weekend, the storm is coming yet again, everybody's, nobody's lawns are burning anymore, so we'll see you, have a safe weekend, and enjoy it. Thank you very much.
Good night.